Mark's twenty-third board meeting, the orders.
Why'd you leave it to the line? Of the United States of America. To the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, the orders of the day, the public hearings have postponed until April fifteenth on local law amendment definition. Junkyard found on our zoning code and on the water, the solar rate increases table till postponed, I should say, to April fifteenth. But Joe Austin's here, he wanted to give us an update. So I'll let him go and get out of here.
Just give you a quick update, I mean, obviously like everything else, the fire department is following in line, so we canceled all events within the fire hall until the end of April. That will include our annual meeting, which is supposed to be next week. So for the time being, all of our offices will stay the same until we are able to reconvene and come up with a way of making that happen. It also includes our annual award banquet, so that's going to be postponed until a later date as well. I just wanted to give you that quick update. We also are looking at response protocols, just to make sure that when we are responding to calls, we're making sure that we're taking our safety. We always look for our safety, but now we have to add that extra level of, we have to be aware of this virus. So we are looking at what that means for us. Thankfully, we don't run the medical part, so it's just fire responses, so hopefully it won't affect us too much, but we are looking at it, so.
Do you need the equipment that you have to protect you from the virus if you ran into a patient?
Um, so, I haven't looked into how much it will protect us, I mean, it should protect us some, because if we were wearing our full air packs, that would be, I mean, it's a completely enclosed environment for us. The big thing that we're looking at is if we are wearing that, how are we going to decon it afterwards to safely decon the stuff, so that it's clean afterwards when we go back in service, so.
Mr. Treax?
Sir.
If you were running towards him, he's got holes, he's got ducts.
So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have approval of minutes, February nineteenth, for the board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes, Mayor.
One second. Hall in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of vouchers.
Approval of vouchers which have been audited and signed for. In general fund fifty-five thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. The sewer thirty thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. The water, seven thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars and twelve cents. And this month capital is small, eight dollars and seven hundred fifty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. I move all as a audit to be approved.
One more second. Hall in favor?
Aye.
Unfinished business, Five Streets, the construction project. Only information I have on that at the moment is, High Line is hoping, depending what was on with this virus and everything, to restart construction Monday, April sixth. Have you heard anything different, Paul?
No.
So that's where we are with that. Waste water treatment plant upgrades, hopefully everybody got a copy of the engineering report and everything on that. Municipal Board at their last board meeting recommended that we go ahead and get the ball rolling, get this thing started. Basically, production wouldn't start until spring of 2021. I talked with Jeff Smith, our Municipal Solutions, get his thoughts on it with everything that was going on with New York State right now, and he's pretty sure the funding that we have there is solid, and that, so we can apply for grants that are coming up here in June and July, which he says if we get the project moving, we'll have a better chance of getting. He recommends that we also move forward with it, so. Up to the Board tonight to make a decision if they want to move forward or not.
I make a motion to go ahead and move forward this.
One second. Hall in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll get the paperwork back to them, get things rolling. Uh, Village Water System Watson Water Agreement. Basically, we did get amended agreement back from Joe Russell's office. I believe it's been sent out to all municipal board members, right Pam?
So now we just got to hear what they have to say on it and then take a look at it.
It hasn't gone to Watson's attorney yet, because our attorney wanted our feedback first.
And that was, that was raised, right? In-kind services were raised.
Raised, yes, they did, yeah, they were raised. Groundwater development project. I'll let Paul, he's been on top of that one from day one.
Um, so we had LNS Timber Management come up to cut our timber for our access road. They did a great job there, completed right now. The cost was fifteen thousand dollars, but they did everything we had asked, and I think a little bit more. Did a really good job. The only few things we might have to do is a lot of work that the, um, the gentleman that was looking at our wells, I believe it was Lane, the company, he had suggested some stone in some areas and stuff, but I think we're going to take care of that ourselves. Everything looks good.
Okay, and the water supply investigation, basically where that is, is we're waiting for better weather and Joe and the landlords are going to take a walk up to there with our geologist and look things over before we move any further with this. Outdoor street lighting, LED conversion. We're still waiting on the national grid. We've got an email back. Jennifer, and they're meeting with Public Service Commission, but we're all on the same boat. There's about eighteen, nineteen of the municipalities waiting on. And then we did have a conference meeting, do you want to talk about that at all?
On the LED conference meeting we had?
Yeah, we went over the, basically, the, their requirements and our requirements, and we're pretty much all on the same page. I didn't bring, yeah, I did bring. We talked about all the upgrades to different poles or where we wanted extra lighting, so basically confirmed that what we wanted, they were on the same page with, and they're going to start going forward with that. And let me see. We did talk about the supply materials and the coronavirus affecting that. They did not think there would be any delays, but they weren't sure. And again, basically, we're waiting on the national grid right now.
Tim, how much, how much, how much more will these illuminate the villages than what we currently have?
How much?
How much, will, will we see a significant? The lights are dull now.
Yeah, you'll see a difference, you'll definitely see a difference. You know, the difference between an LED and a bulb anywhere, you know what I'm saying? It'll be that much more, basically. But they actually, by understanding.
They're going to be more.
Yeah, it's going to be more direct, it's not going to be, you know.
Kind of like the ball fields are lit up.
Yeah, it's going to be more direct lighting. So that's about all that was about. We are on the same page with, with that group as far as the requirements.
Any other questions on that? Local law temporary permits, uh, I think we ought to table that till the April fifteenth meeting, only because I think we should have Joe's expertise when we fill out the environmental assessment form. If that's all right with everyone. Nyxac Ross Road. I sent Joe an email asking him, he basically emailed the gas company, I called him on the phone, he was going to call their attorney and see what was going on. I called him this afternoon, but I couldn't reach him to see if he had any updates on it. He hasn't called me back, so, still kind of have a standstill. New business, does anybody have any old business they want to bring up before we move on to new business? New business, craft surcharges, January twenty twenty, they were zero. We don't really have to do anything there. Town of Lau will request for lead agency status, don't change request on the waters road. I would think we would want to go ahead and make a motion and let Lau, Town of Lau be the lead agency on that one.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
One second. Hall in favor?
Aye.
Twenty nineteen timber sale bid results. Want to talk on that, or?
Um, Eric Hershey sent out bids for our timber sale this year. MJ Line Decking Logging was the high bid amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Um, that, that price will be a little bit less, because when Line Deckers went in and did the access road, a few of the trees were in the timber sale, so he's already, he estimated the value of the timber that Line Deckers caught buried Line Decker at eighteen hundred dollars, so.
Anybody have any questions on that?
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid minus the eighteen hundred dollars to the high bidder, which was.
Oh, it's eighteen twenty-seven, but that, that was just an estimate. He's got to get up there and look at it.
So you want to hold?
I don't think.
Well, I'd have to go through the municipal board first, so.
They don't make any real financial decisions.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I make a motion that we accept the bid.
One forty-eight three twenty.
Minus, I would hope that it would be the eighteen twenty-seven, it's different than.
It shouldn't be much higher than what we're.
Should I, should I, gee, Joe's not here, Russell, should we contingent that based on that amount? I'll make the motion that we accept the bid minus the eighteen hundred twenty-seven dollars.
I'll second that.
Can I make a suggestion?
Can we just say MJ Line Decker Logging?
Whatever, whatever the value is around that eighteen hundred, whatever that number is, we'll, we'll approve that hundred and forty-eight minus whatever the real number ends up being. It's not going to be over two thousand dollars, probably, right?
Right.
So you could put a cap of two thousand. If you get too specific a number and it's higher, then it's an issue, right?
Okay, I don't want to read that up because.
As long as it's not more than two thousand, yeah, I'll, I'll make my motion that way.
I'll second it that way.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Utility advisory appraisals of twenty twenty. Basically on our water lines, watershed up there, the buildings. You know, I don't really think we should have to do anything at all, so just, they don't look that bad. Extension of elected officials. Sorry to say, because our elections were postponed till later in April. We need to extend Charlie, they can stick there with us a while, and extend Danny.
I am not going to put another ad in the paper, thanking people for voting for me, ending on the thirty-first of March.
I'm good with, I'm good with Charlie, I gotta think it over about being.
We need a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion that we extend their appointment.
I don't really need a motion because that was.
It was an order, yeah, it was an order from the governor.
So Charlie, you will stay, that's what the governor said.
Yes, he did, and yes, I will. I printed it out to have proof that I have to stay.
You didn't ask me.
But we don't need to make.
I saw a lot of polls.
Stretch your appointments for the deputy clerk, associate justice, public health officer, and village historian. Do we have to each one of them separate, or can we make it a?
I think you could do them all together.
All together.
And I would say, your date, your dates probably, I'm assuming you're going to have like a organizational meeting, probably, I don't know, it'll be the day after the village election, or, that's kind of what they were suggesting, the day or two after the election, so.
Have they determined how that's going to be? I don't know, it might be, it might be a mail election, that's where you send the votes into a mail.
Yeah, I don't think they know yet.
If everything goes the way this, both of the elections are supposed to be in twenty-eight, right?
Does that affect these though, or can we just extend, can we make the motion for April one again? I guess it's, because these have really elected positions.
No, it, I think Nycom suggested, or, I don't know, it was Joe Russell, or somebody, I think it was Nycom, said we extend them to, to your organizational meeting, and it will be after, after elections.
So just to make sure.
I will make the motion.
What if we?
That needs to, the date of our organizational meeting, which is to be determined.
I'll second it.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
We've got an alternate position, the zoning, joint zoning and planning, no, joint town and village zoning board. And I'd like to appoint Kyle Logan, that'll be finishing out, uh, Kyle, was it? Uh, term.
Carla moved up to a regular member.
So be finishing out her term, which would be to twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty. We have a motion to appoint Kyle.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
And this just came in today, I think everybody got a copy of it. Basically, it's from our union, with the DPW guys, just talking about how they want to handle any grievances until June first during this time of, really going on with the COVID nineteen. And if you're all agreeable with, it's basically the same thing, the state of New York's doing with CSCA. Email her back and let her know if you're okay with it, if you guys are.
Yes.
Right now, everything's good. Second on that?
Second.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
Hang on, one quick thing before we move to budget. As you know, we were awarded a justice grant to make these doors handicap accessible on our side and town, with the town. I talked with Randy this morning, he's coming up to his board tomorrow morning. Basically, we would split the costs of the doors, same way we do the building, sixty forty. And right now, that was, I lost my papers on the desk, I'm sorry, but the village's share would be after the grant, a little over, I think, a little over sixty-five hundred, and the town was going to be ten thousand something. So I guess we'd just need a motion to move forward with changing out the doors.
So moved.
I'll second it. Hall in favor?
Aye.
Which brings us down to the budget for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. One thing we need to do tonight, schedule a public hearing, and I would say it would have to be most likely for our April fifteenth board meeting. But before we do that, does anybody have any questions on the budget? Or want to hold too many certain sections of it? Is everybody okay with what we have from?
Uh, I only have a couple of questions, one being, out of way on the. There's some funding in here for purchase of new trucks or something?
New what?
New vehicles or whatever?
Yeah.
So, I guess explain that, I guess.
Okay, basically, the village, we're looking to replace one pickup truck. And, uh, that would be a crew cab that could be used to go into meetings and things. Basically, what would happen there was Paul's truck, which is an extended cab, we will send to the watershed, because really kept, set beats that extra space for all his test kits and everything he takes around. And then his truck would come down to the DPW guys to use, and Paul would have the new crew cab. And then if they got to go to meetings or anything, they've got that vehicle. And what we need to get rid of, I think it's a two thousand eight, which we're using for a pool truck, that's at the DPW garage.
Two thousand nine.
It's a.
Two thousand nine.
That truck would be going up for surplus. And that's, I think that's the only vehicle going out for a DPW unit. The only other vehicle is a police department, is looking for their vehicle.
See them both in there, just kind of want to.
And the reason. And they're leaning towards possibly a pickup truck, because they are putting those into service now for police departments. But the big thing there is, it's on state contract, but they also have almost a nine thousand dollar rebate on state contract. So we can save over the price of, by the time it's all specked out, their own equipment, over SUV, we could probably save six, seven thousand dollars on the purchase price. And I checked with Nick, just to make sure that later on this summer, when we get around the border of that vehicle, he said that that rebate is locked in on state contract, it won't go away.
May I assume that it's a four-door truck for the police department?
Yeah. And basically, there's a couple of different ways they can configure it. One is they would just have one area for somebody they might be picking up, and then the other area would be caged off where they could put their rifles and whatnot then. And then they do have other setups if they want to go put something in the, in the box. We would, it would require a good lockable hard cover, ton of cover. And that's not set in stone, but that's, we were leaning that way to save money.
Thank you.
Those are the only vehicles we're looking at. Any other questions, John?
We got to make a motion to, I make a motion that we have a public hearing for the budget on our April fifteenth meeting at four five.
I'll second it.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence. Kuz County Planning Department bus shelters, if they have a chance to look that over. One thing I have to say on that is, when it comes to the Commons parking lot, the county would have to come up with a memory ending of understanding where the village were even placing there. I think the area they're thinking of is just down past where the, almost across from the election office down there, there's a little island down back there. But the other thing, I, if you read through the email, basically they want us to install them and us to maintain them, and I don't feel the village should take on that responsibility. We have, basically, we're not the handful right now on our part, and I don't know what anybody else's thoughts are.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you, this is, uh, this is a county-wide improvement that they're talking about putting in there, and I think it should, the cost of maintaining it should be the burden of the entire county rather than just the village. And also, the other thing I want to mention is, we want to make sure that, that Paul's going to be involved too, where they're going to put it, because we're going to have to work around it.
Right.
So that's the only two thoughts I have. I think it's a great idea.
They're going to maintain both of them, right?
Yeah, they want us to maintain, they want a dollar general, too.
They want us to install them and maintain them, which means in the wintertime.
I haven't had a conversation with the center at all, I don't know if you spoke with.
They say there's not a lot of maintenance to them, but I'm thinking.
I don't think there is, but.
You're still going to have rubbish to clean up around them, and they're going to need to be cleaned on a regular basis, I would say. Especially like right now.
We might, we're going to have to wash them, you know.
Somebody can say to us, well, you're doing that while you're doing this for us, and it could snowball to somebody else wanting something, and so, you have to be careful that way. I think it's a great idea.
Does it become the property of the village when they place them there, is that the deal? You know what I'm saying? That's kind of a insurance thing too, you know, I mean, the viability.
Well, we would have, we would have to put them on our insurance, I would think.
That's what I mean, you know, once it's placed on village property, it is the village's. Because if it's the village's, then I guess we'd almost have to maintain it.
Well, I guess it's, it's an if or a and on that, Tim. Even if we don't own them, if the area around it isn't taken care of correctly, I suppose we could still be involved. But if we own the shelter, we need to insure it, and if it's not maintained correctly, we could be held liable. It's, it's probably a fire shot, but certainly something we're concerned about.
I think there needs to be a little bit more investigation into it before we, then we say there or there.
Either way. Why don't we get back to it and say, we're not opposed to it any means, we just have concern about maintaining them and possibly owning them.
I'm sorry, can I get back to Sandra?
I can also, wow, I say I speak with them.
If you get back in the courthouse.
Actually not working right now.
You're, you're working at home?
We've got correspondence from the Patrick O'Brien family. I don't really see anything wrong with that. What they want to do, sounds like it'd be good for the village, bring two people in. The only problem is, they want to do it main twenty-first, and who knows what's going to be going on there.
We may have to cancel.
But as far as what they want to do, what I see, I have no problem with it, I'm talking to the board.
I think if he's, yeah, I mean, the situation, if he's even open to that, I hope that he is, but.
Just, all the news, I mean, someone would say this could carry on till June or July, I hope they're wrong. Just all the news, I mean, some would say this could carry on till June or July, I'd be wrong, but...
And I've talked with them, and if you can't do it then, you'd like to do it later in the year. From a DPW standpoint, I don't see a problem with that. Then one of the other issues would be, I wonder more they're gonna be at that time, early in the summer.
So any other thoughts on that, or just wanna tell Patrick that it's okay depending on what happens this week?
Yeah.
Did you make any aware about the street treatment you were talking about?
Yeah, I talked to him about that, and told him, you know, if this is a go with DPW, we could come out for him. He wants us, it's one thing that, I don't see it as a big issue.
Especially now, if things get back to normal, so to speak. It's especially good for the businesses in that area.
And him being a car guy, too, so, okay, for...
Okay, New York State Controller, fiscal stress monitoring. Questions on that? Doesn't look like we're doing too bad, really.
Lower the start of that, or?
Yeah.
Not gonna get much lower, I guess, you know?
No.
I don't think so.
That's a really negative.
Any questions on that?
Handprint in the auto sheet, it's in there in the office, if you wanna read through it more, which ones have the letters? What time will I get it?
Officers of committee report, so, village attorney, he's not here. I have nothing, but closer.
I don't know, I mean, have something for executive session?
Personnel?
Yes.
Chief of police, not here, superintendent, have anything?
I just got a couple things. Even though we already started spring cleanup, the official date will be April first. Right now, I'm in the process of doing some paperwork with FEMA to get some money for the storm that we had last Halloween, October thirty-first and November first. Question, get money and get some stuff replaced. Not that there was a lot of damage, but see what we can get from it. Now would be it.
Capital future plan?
Nothing.
Personnel, I would like a real short executive session on that. Finance, anything?
I wasn't there today, but I'll be here tomorrow for the lectures and the audit.
The judge's audit is current?
Fire department, Joe gave us an report, police department?
No.
Anybody have anything?
No, sir.
Board, zoning board, anything?
Uh, no.
Municipal board?
Next meeting is one day before our meeting, April fourteenth, sixth?
Yeah. Town?
No.
Town? Percreation?
The only thing with the summer act is whether to suggest to Randy and Mike, maybe have a move for potentially a Plan B, especially with school usage. And I admire you do a Plan B, to be honest with you, maybe you want to come up with Plan C and Plan B, I don't know. So that's really all I've got there.
I don't believe we have any public comment tonight, so that's it. And we have a motion to, don't have executive session.
So moved for a personnel, me, me, reason.
We gotta get, I'll second it.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Nick, you got him out there?
We gotta get him in a turntable.
I'll get it.
You know how to do it?
I know how to do it.